Viewers can watch the City Council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/citycouncil-tv. I'd like to ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. I'd also like to ask us to be respectful of each other. Do not disrupt the meeting while you are here. If you are disruptive, you'll be asked to leave, and if you fail to comply, you'll be escorted out. According to City Council rules, there are no signs allowed in the chamber. We had a quorum, and one just left. I'm just going to wait 10 seconds. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Royal.
Counselor Baker.
Yeah.
Counselor Braden. Counselor Coletta. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. Counselor Flaherty.
Yeah.
Counselor Flynn.
Yeah.
Counselor Lara.
Yeah.
Counselor Lou Jean.
President.
Counselor Mejia.
Yeah.
Counselor Murphy.
Yeah.
And Counselor Worrell. I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. This week's clergy is Reverend Taylor. At this time, I would like to ask Counselor Lara to please come forward and introduce our clergy for today.
Really excited to be here, and I'm going to read the Reverend's official biography, but I wanted to tell a story very quickly about how we met. Reverend Damaris actually came to a coffee hour in Eglaston Square to come and say hello, and initially I said, "Oh, a constituent is here to come and ask questions." And typically, when you're an elected official and you're going to coffee hours, people come to ask you for something, to fix a problem for them, and so on and so forth. But Reverend Damaris was there because he said that he was opening up a church, and he wanted to know how he could be of service to the neighborhood and what organizations he should be connected to, and how he could show up best for the people in Jamaica Plain. And so I think that that story is just a testament to his commitment to serve his community anchored by his faith, so I'm very grateful to have him. Reverend Damaris is the pastor of the Bridge Church in Jamaica Plain. After graduating from Harvard University, he immediately dove into community and ministry work in Boston for two years. Since then, he has served in churches and nonprofits around the country, both in urban and rural contexts. Hope in Jesus propels him in all that he does. That same motivating hope guides his passion for impacting diverse communities by partnering together with community members to catalyze moments and movements of flourishing and holistic transformation. Thank you so much, Reverend, for being here with us today.
Greetings to the council and to everyone in the chamber. Before I give a quick prayer, I want to read a quick scripture that hopefully will center us in this moment, as I know you have pressing matters to attend to. Psalm 9, verses 9 through 10 says, "The Lord is a stronghold for the oppressed, a stronghold in times of trouble, and those who know your name put their trust in you; for you, O Lord, have not forsaken those who seek you." Let us pray. God, today we come to you humbly. We come to you as your creation, your people who need you, who are desperate for your guidance, for your way-making. And Lord, as this council comes together to weigh heavy matters, I pray that on each of their consciences and on their minds, they would remember the oppressed, the marginalized, the misfit, the outcast, people who have been overlooked, pushed down, turned around, intentionally so. And so, God, I pray that they will make space as they think about budget matters and funding different things in the city, that they would make space and center those who are less fortunate, who need help. And God, I pray that they would be instruments of your blessing, that they would bring about flourishing through their service, that they would inspire others, the people who don't have a title, whose names we do not know, who serve in nonprofits, who serve with no money in our communities, to bless children, to bless the LGBTQ community, to push back darkness in every way. I pray that light would prevail. I pray that calmness and kindness and thoughtfulness and justice would be at the center of their discussions today. As they make decisions, let it rest on their hearts and on their minds, that they serve the people. And so we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on the right, indivisible, omnipotent, infinite, and justic for all.
Thank you, Reverend, for those inspiring words in the prayer. We have two presentations today. The first one will be from Counselor Mejia. At this time, let me invite Counselor Mejia to the podium and introduce our special guest. And after Counselor Mejia, we have a presentation as well from Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Mejia?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning or good afternoon, everyone. It's so good to be with you all today. I am incredibly excited to present citations to a group of young people from the Burke High School, who earlier this year, we know that Burke had experienced a number series of incidences, and so for us, we were really grateful to partner alongside Dr. Crump Swaby, who is here today, a clinician who has been working with our office since COVID and beyond that, to really help address the social, emotional, and mental well-being of our constituents. And under her leadership, our office supported an initiative to work with barber shops and hair salons to get their hair fixed while they were getting their hair done, get their head fixed too. And under her leadership, she designed a mental health ambassadors program that we were able to execute across the city of Boston. And this year, in partnership with her and various organizations, we decided to wrap our arms around the Burke. And this mental health and wellness ambassadors program was an opportunity for young people to not just take care and look at their own trauma triggers, but to be able to also identify trauma triggers in their peers and create an opportunity to connect their peers to the services that they needed to address the issues that they were experiencing. And so while people talk about the importance of mental health and wellness, I'm really so incredibly grateful to Dr. Crump Swaby, the Burke, for opening up their doors and creating space for young people to not just learn about themselves, but to also help support their peers while looking at this as a workforce development initiative, so that young people can actually see mental health and wellness as a job and something that they can pursue in the future. So we are making a presentation today to not only uplift these young people, but to also uplift the work, the important work happening at the Burke. And under their leadership, the district, for the first time ever, created a mental health and wellness day. These young people that you see here, and there's a few of them that are not here today, shut down the entire school for a day of wellness, and they worked with community partners so that they can do Reiki, massages, yoga, mindfulness, all of these different types of activities. They had mental health clinicians, and it was all produced by these young people. And the superintendent, Skipper, was in attendance, and I'm hoping that she would be inspired to do a day of wellness across our entire district, so that young people can, and our educators, can just shut down for the day and take care of themselves. So with that, I am going to provide the citations for the young people who are here. We, I'm gonna, can you help me? You want to help me?
Sure.
Okay. So you want to call out the person's name?
Honey Abraham. Melissa Diaz. Gerald Montello Carbonielli. Charles Goncalves. Alicia Rose. And Michelle Clark.
Now, you weren't prepared to do this, but I know you got this. You want to talk a little bit about your experience with the program and how you feel?
So it was something really new for me. I never thought about joining a program like this or about, I always wanted to learn more about mental health, and it was such a good experience. We had the opportunity to learn about mental health, anxiety, depression, coping, and it was fantastic, and especially all the steps that we had to plan the day. It was all amazing. Thank you so much.
And we have some of their parents here, and Dr. Crump Swaby, can you please come down here too? I mean, this is your moment to shine. We would not be here without you and your leadership. Can we give it up to Dr. Crump Swaby? And as she comes down, you know, I, and this is, I say this a lot because Counselor Lara always says that the personal is political and professional, like, so for me, I talk about the fact that growing up in the city of Boston, I struggled with my own mental health. You know, I attempted suicide when I was younger, and my mom was so afraid to take me to the hospital, that I grew up believing that my mom did not love me. But the reason why she never took me to the hospital was because she was afraid that they would take me away from her. And so there's a lot of stigma in communities of color around mental health and wellness. And I share my story publicly because I know that there's so many other young people still to this day that are suffering in silence, and it's my opportunity to be vulnerable, to show them that we are here for a reason, and there's no reason for us to not want to be here anymore. So, Dr. Crump Swaby.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here in your presence, and I just want to thank you all for allowing us an opportunity to be here, to share with you the hard work of these young people. We spent almost half a school year training and teaching them about mental health awareness and wellness. It was an amazing opportunity to spend time with these young people. They had a thirst for knowledge, and not only did they have a thirst for knowledge, they executed that thirst when they planned an entire mental health and wellness day at their school. It's so important. Many of us know that we have a youth mental health crisis. There's so many young people who are lonely. There are so many young people who are dealing with anxiety, depression, and of course, trauma. And it's important for us to make sure that we wrap our hands, our arms, our love, our willingness to work with them, not to do things for them or to do it to them, but to do it with them. And we saw that in fullness when they planned this wellness day, and what young people can do when you put the power in their hands to make sure that themselves and their peers are fully prepared to take care of their own wellness. So I just want to thank you and encourage you to support others, to support young people, because they are not our future, they are our present, and we need to put all, invest in them, and invest in the things that they are interested in. So again, thank you for the opportunity to be here, to present these amazing young people in terms of the work that they did around mental health and wellness. Thank you.
Mr. President, it's given me the opportunity to call my colleagues up for a photo, so if my colleagues can join us here. Thank you. And give it up one more time for the mental health ambassadors. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. 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 Thank you, Council Mahia, for bringing these guests, BPS students here, and really fortunate to listen to the stories and the message of these young people. So I wanna say thank you to these young BPS students for being here, welcome them to the City Council as well. At this time, let me also recognize, introduce Council Flaherty to please come up and introduce our second special guest.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I have the privilege and honor on behalf of all of us here to introduce Marissa Bono. She's worked for the city of Boston for over 40 years, dedicated employee for the city of Boston, particularly in the Treasury Department, but she's also worked with several departments over the years on numerous projects. She was actually part of the city's first upgrade project to PeopleSoft HCM. She was the liaison between multiple departments, leading the effort from the Treasury Department, but in regards to all the implementation of HCM throughout our city. She has been the person that many of her coworkers have gone through to for guidance over the years. She takes a lot of pride in her work and being a city employee. She always goes above and beyond to help anyone that comes to her for her assistance. She is one of those unsung heroes in city government that we all reference and talk about, we're only as good as the people that are behind us. And here in the city of Boston, particularly for the Treasury Department, she is that person. She's built many relationships throughout her career, not just here at City Hall, but across the city, and just wanna go on record of extending the Boston City Council's best wishes for Marissa in her retirement. And now therefore be it resolved that the City Council wishes Marissa Bono all the best in her new role in helping in developing young minds as she leaves the city of Boston as a retiree, and be it further resolved that the City Council, a meeting assembled, declares June 14th, 2023, as Marissa Bono Day in the city of Boston, signed by the Council President and all of us here in the city.
I just wanted to thank everybody, and it's, it has been a pleasure, and I have worked with the best of the best, and I wanna thank everybody and God bless.
Do I ask my colleagues to come for a picture?
Yep.
Forty years, so you had to win.
Forty-two. Thank you. Thank you. I've known him when he was imprinting. Thank you.
Forty-two years, to be exact, forty-two years.
Yeah, just a little shy.
Tremendous service for our city.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Council Flaherty, and thank you, Marissa, for your dedication to the residents of Boston. Two outstanding presentations from Council Mahia and Council Flaherty. Mr. Clark, can you ensure the record is reflected that Council Arroyo is present? Can we also ensure the record is reflected that Council Rell is present? We're on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes, seeing and hearing. No discussion on the matter. The chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting as presented. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the last meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you, the minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. Communications from her honor. And Mayor, Mr. Clark, please read dockets 1097 to 1104.
Document number 1097, message in order for your approval in order to reduce the fiscal year 23 appropriation for the reserve for collective bargaining by $1,273,531 to provide funding for the Boston Public Health Commission for fiscal year 23 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston Public Health Commission and the Boston EMS Division of the Boston Police Patrolmen's Association, filed in the office of the city clerk, June 12, 2023. Document number 1098, message in order for your approval, a supplemental order for the Public Health, Public Health Commission for fiscal year 23 in the amount of $1,273,531 to cover fiscal year 23 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the Boston Public Health Commission and the Boston EMS Division of the Boston Police Patrolmen's Association. The terms of the contracts are July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2023, and July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026. The major provisions of the contracts include base wage increases of 1.5% in July of 2021, 2% in July 2022, 2% in July 2023, 2% in July 2024, and 2% in July 2025. The agreements also contain other benefits, including a mobile integrated health community EMS adjustment and increased hazardous duty differentials. Document number 1099, message in order for your approval in order to reduce the fiscal year 23 appropriation for the reserve for collective bargaining by $630,016 to provide funding for the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and ASME CIO Local 1526, filed in the office of the city clerk, June 12, 2023. Document number 1100, message in order for your approval, a supplemental order for the Boston Public Library for fiscal year 23 in the amount of $630,016 to cover the fiscal year costs contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Boston and ASME CIO Local 1526. The terms of the contracts are July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023. The major provisions of the contract include base wage increases of 2%, 1.5%, and 2% to be given in October of each fiscal year. Document number 1101, message in order for your approval in order to reduce the fiscal year 23 appropriation for the reserve for collective bargaining by $186,862 to provide funding for the Boston Public Schools for the fiscal year 23 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston Public Schools and SEIU Local 888 Planning and Engineering, filed in the office of the city clerk on June 12, 2023. Document number 1102, message in order for your approval, a supplemental order for the Boston Public Schools for the fiscal year 23 in the amount of $186,862 to cover the fiscal year 23 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston Public Schools and SEIU Local 888 Planning and Engineering. The terms of the contracts are September 1st, 2020 through August 31st, 2023, and September 1st, 2023 through August 31st, 2026. The major provisions of the contracts include base wage increases of 2%, 2.5%, 2.5%, 2.5%, and 2% to be given in October of each fiscal year of the contract term. Document number 113, 1103, message in order for your approval in order to reduce the fiscal year 23 appropriation for the reserve for collective bargaining by $27,803 to provide funding for the Boston Public Schools for fiscal year 23 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston Public Schools and AFL CIO Council 93 Local 2814 Storekeepers, filed in the office of the city clerk on June 12, 2023. Document number 1104, message in order for your approval, a supplemental order for the Boston Public Schools for fiscal year 23 in the amount of $27,803 to cover the fiscal year 23 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston Public Schools and AFL CIO Council 93 Local 2814 Storekeepers. The terms of the contracts are September 1st, 2020 through August 31st, 2023, and September 1st, 2023 through August 31st, 2026. The major provisions of the contracts include base, base wage increases of 2%, 2.5%, 2.5%, 2.5%, and 2% to be given in September of each fiscal year of the contract term.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. The chair recognizes Council Rell. Council Rell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President, and I would like to suspend and pass docket numbers 1099 and 1100. These are librarian contracts. Both of these dockets relate to contract negotiations. This contract brings the collective agreement in line with our city union contracts. By aligning holidays to include Juteen in gender-neutral language, this contract additionally provides BAT pay and recognition for work during the COVID-19 pandemic, given that this calendar remains tight through the summer, and the librarians have been waiting for months on this contract for their, for approval. Acts that we suspend and pass docket number 1099 and 1100. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Rell. Council Rell seeks suspension of the rules in passage of these two dockets. We'll do, we'll do the first one, which is 1-0. Before I go, Council Flaherty, do you have? Council Rell seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1099. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. This docket is passed. Council Rell seeks suspension of the rules in passage of the next docket, 1100. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The docket is passed. Mr. Clark, the remaining dockets will be referred to the City Services and Innovation Technology. Mr. Clark, can you ensure the record is reflected that Council Collater is present? Can you ensure the record is reflected that Council Braden is present? And can you ensure the record is reflected that Council Fernandez Anderson is present as well? Mr. Clark, can you please read docket 1105?
Document number 1105, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $413,316 in the form of a grant for the smart and connected communities awarded by the National Science Sciences Foundation, passed through Northeastern University, to be administered by the mayor's office. The grant will fund the Common Sense Standards for Enacting Sensor Network for an Equitable Society project, which is focused on climate resilience and capital development along the Blue Hill Avenue corridor. The project partners are Northeastern University's Boston Area Search and Research Initiative, Mayor's Office of New Mechanics, Dudley Street Neighborhood Initiative, and Project Right.
Thank you. This docket, 1105, will be assigned to the Committee Environmental Justice, POCs, and Resiliency. Mr. Clark, can you please read the next docket, which is 1106?
Document number 1106, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $19,691.80 in the form of a grant for the Eversource Agreement awarded by the donor group to be administered by the police department. The grant will fund the purchase and installation of security cameras in the vicinity of the Andrews Square substation.
The chair recognizes Council Flaherty, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety Criminal Justice. Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just as Chair, moving to suspend the rules in pass 1106, small grant amount, and it's for the installation of security cameras, very active civic association that you're well aware of. They've seen an uptick in property crime and vandalism, and so this is a much-needed shot in the arm for the folks that have been working tirelessly with the Boston Police Department, particularly Area C6, Captain and their team. And if we could get this turned around so that you get these security cameras up to protect and help them and help the police in the neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank, thank you, Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety Criminal Justice, seeks suspension of the rules, passage of docket 1106. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket is passed. Thank you, Council Flaherty. I also wanna thank Council Baker for his, his work on this as well. We're on to reports of public offices and others. Mr. Clark, please read docket 1107 to 1108 together.
Document, document number 1107, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Gayana Daniel as ex-official member of the Task Force on Literacy Rates effective immediately. And docket number 1108, communication was received from the city clerk of the filing by the Boston Planning and Development Agency regarding proposed minor modification to the Charlestown Urban Renewal Plan, project number MSR-55 with respect to parcel R-26C.
Thank you. These two dockets, 1107 and 1108, they'll be placed on file. Mr. Clark, can you please read docket 1109?
Document number 1109, the Constable Barnes of Darius Agnew, Ruth Baez-Valez, Paul Barrett, Devon Buchanan, Jalila Cartwright, Gavin Castagna, Rufflin Kazo, Freco Damas, Mike Ivalo Yadis, Emmanuel Garvin, Colin Harrell, Ronald Holmes, Vincent James, Carl Jean Luis, William Joyce, Daniel Long, Berlinda Maldon, Burton Milkowski, Manuel Mendez, Alexa McNeil, Paul Morelli, Jonas Moros, Matthew Morrison, Phil Moore Philip, James Redden, Robert Ryan, Pierre Solomon, Gene Sanon, Patricia Sheets, Joseph Singletary Jr., Wallace Tilford, Christopher Waits, Joseph Smith, and Eric Storer have been duly approved by the Collector Treasurer where received.
Thank you. This docket, 1109, is approved under the usual terms and conditions. We're on to matters recently heard for possible action. Mr. Clark, can you please read docket 0760 and 0761?
Document number 0760, message in order for annual appropriation and tax order for fiscal year 2024, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 10th, 2023. And document number 0761, message in order for an annual appropriation for the school department for fiscal year 2024, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 10th, 2023.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Fernandez Anderson, the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means.
Mr. President, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. If it's okay with you, may I sit?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Council Fernandez Anderson.
So first, I just wanted to begin by thanking all of my colleagues. I think that I here thank you a lot to myself as Chair for the Ways and Means or the budget process and, but acknowledging it within itself is graceful, and I appreciate all of you for your, your, your time, for your work, your input. And as I mentioned, the budget process that I've facilitated this year and last year hopefully is exemplary of what a leader should do in terms of providing or allowing a democratic process, where all councilors have equal opportunity to voice their opinion and that I use no biases or opinion or objections to what people were proposing rather than that, that I allowed everyone to have a voice and allowed the space for us to work to a compromise and hopefully today, a better one than the last one. I also wanted to address a couple of colleagues. Needless to say, I don't want to get into back and forth today with condescension about process or any of that. If you want to participate in the budget process, the opportunity was there for you. And so I hope that you can appreciate that this is more than what it appears and that I've tried to do my job as Chair to the best of my ability, and I would, I would argue an awesome job. And so thus, this budget process serves as a testament And so thus, this budget process serves as a testament to our inclusive approach, and it shows our value and voices in our community. Last week, I went on and on with a big speech about transparency and all the work that I executed, that my colleagues executed. I noticed that some enlarged councilors, Councilor Mejia, Councilor Ujen, and I know that some district councilors, Councilor Royal, Councilor Lara, Councilor, I think Coletta and Braden all provided workshops, or in collaboration or individual, to their districts. So I think we were all doing the best that we can to increase knowledge and allow people to be able to navigate this process as much as possible. And so then we came in and the budget was at one point passed, and some folks had second thoughts and asked for us to slow it down a bit and go back to working sessions to be able to look at it once again. In this report that you'll see today, you will see that my council colleagues and I have proposed a number of investments in areas such as infrastructure, economic development, equity initiatives, youth development, environmental protection, and of course, persittory budget. I urge you to carefully consider the proposed budget and amendments. I also want to take a moment to remind you that we have received precise figures from the Office of Budget Management. These figures represent departmental spending through June 18, 2023. Assuming that there is seamless spending pattern for each department throughout the remainder of the current fiscal year, we have conducted calculations to determine the projected expenditure for each line item by the end of fiscal year 23. While the upcoming numbers may appear substantial, I want to assure you that a reduced budget will not lead to any job losses of our employees. I would like to emphasize that no pools were made from line items where the new FY24 allocations was lower than the calculated spending for the FY23. The only exceptions to this with speaking with department heads and chiefs and folks in the community, and of course, my council colleagues are free to speak on their decisions. Today, BPD indemnification is an exception, BPD overtime, BPD clothing allowance, execution of courts, law department contractor services. Please note that the following truncated figures reflecting large decreases in department So number one, $22 million was decreased from the Boston Police Department overtime budget. Please note the following truncated figures reflecting large increases. $8 million has been allocated to Mayor's Office of Housing. $9 million has been allocated to Youth, Employment, and Opportunity. $4 million and $50,000 has been allocated to Office of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion. $2 million has been allocated to Arts and Culture. $2 million and $96,000 has been allocated to Women's Advancement. $2.1 million has been allocated to Parks and Recreation. $2.2 million allocated to the Office of Human Services, and $10 million has been allocated to persittory budgeting, just to include a few. Keeping this in mind, I ask you for your vote in support of the recommended budget based on the following amendments and proposed by council colleagues and myself. Please refer to the committee report for additional details regarding the pools for the following amendments. Again, I took my colleagues, all of my colleagues' proposals, and then we got together again, held two working sessions, and reviewed everything, line item by line item, and switched things, moved some things around as much as possible to lower it to, as opposed to $45 million as opposed to $75 million of amendments. And this is out of the budget, $2.2 billion operating budget. So $75 million sounds like a lot, but compared to a $2 billion, $2.2 billion budget, it's actually pretty modest. So the amendments are as follows. $75,000 to, and I have to read it, I'm sorry, it's going to be long. I have to read it because it's a new list, or rather, it's been amended list. So here it goes. $75,000 to the property management for a full-time senior computer operator shift supervisor. $290,000 to Office of Labor Compliance and Worker Protection for Worker Facility Safety Initiative. $500,000 to Youth, Employment, and Opportunity for Life Sciences. $500,000 to Office of Arts and Culture, planning, funding for cultural spaces, queer-specific. $1.1 million to Boston Public Health Commission for Mental Health Crisis Response. $30,000 to Language and Communication Access Equipment for two sets of translation equipment for civic association and technical assistance. $20,000 to Office of Returning Citizens for RSC Vital Documents Waiver Pilot Program. $750,000 to Mayor's Office of Housing for Pre-Development Support for RFPs. $1 million to Parks and Recreation Department for Black Heritage Trail. $500,000 for Office of New Neighborhood Services for Technical Assistance for Civic Associations. $1 million for Office of Housing for BHA City Voucher for Boston Public School Students. $50,000 to Parks and Recreation Department to expand tree canopy. $584,896 for property management personnel for, of $484,896 for salary increase for municipal officers. $250,000 Youth Employment Opportunity for Boston High School Study. $266,868, sorry, dollars, Mayor's Office of Immigrant Advancement Contractual for Moya Contractual Services Level Funding. $1.5 million Office of Economic Opportunity for Inclusion Contract. $3,323,933 increased Mayor's Office of Housing Special Appropriations. $70,000 Boston Public Works Personnel for 2FT Hokeys. $1.5 million for the Office of Arts and Culture Contractual. $600,000 Office of Human Services Youth Engagement and Advancement Contractual for Experiential Learning. $80,000 Office of Human Service Personnel to Increase Childcare Entrepreneurship Fund. $40,000 Office of Human Services Personnel to Increase Childcare Entrepreneurship Fund. $1 million Youth Employment and Opportunity Contractual for Early Adult Workforce Development Fund. $105,000 for Boston City Council Personnel Technical Assistance Employee. $300,000 Youth Employment and Opportunity Contractual for Workforce Development for 19 to 24-year-olds through nonprofit organizations that apply to contracts. $100,000 to the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Advancement Contractual Services for Immigrant Lead Boston Program. $50,000 for Office of People Operations Contractual for Municipal Wage Study. $1,495,000 Boston City Council Personnel to Amount for Unders, to increase, for salary increase for Boston City Council. $34,385 Boston City Council Personnel Unemployment Compensation for Council Staff Salary Increase. $5,750,000 to Youth Employment Opportunity for Youth Jobs. $21,000 Office of Neighborhood Services Contractual for Cultural Event Funds. $140,000 for Boston Fire Department for 2FT Lab Inspectors. $500,000 Mayor's Office of LGBTQ+ Advancement Contractual for Organizations Housing LGBTQ People in the amount of $500,000, $500,000 Youth Employment and Opportunity Contractual for Mental Health and Wellness Ambassador Program. $200,000 Office of Neighborhood Services Contractual for Youth Action Network Grant Program. $260,000 Mayor's Office of Women's Advancement Personnel, four to five FTEs to conduct maternal health programming. $150,000 Age-Strong Commission Contractual for Citywide Senior Recreational Study, Space Study. $50,000 Parks and Recreation Department Supplies and Materials to Expand Tree Canopy. $500,000 Office of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion Contractual for Space Grants that renovate the interior spaces for businesses and subsidize rent. $25,000 Office of Historic Preservation Contractual for Black Heritage Trail Sinage. $100,000 Boston Sensors for Youth and Families Contractual Services for Youth Programming. $1 million for Parks and Recreation for Department Personnel for the Franklin Park Plan. $200,000 Youth Employment and Opportunity Personnel for Workforce Development for 19 to 24-year-olds. $250,000 Department of Innovation Technology Equipment for Upgrading the COBOCs 2.0 to Mitigate Utility and Street Work. $250,000 Mayor's Office of Immigrant Advancement Contractual for Years-Well Adult Classes for Beginners and New Arrivals. $400,000 for Office of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion Contractual for a Citywide Racial Disparity Study. $300,000 Office of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion Contractual for Support Minorities Who Want to Open Small Business Startups. $1.5 million Office of Human Services for Office of Returning Citizen Contractual to Aid Returning Citizens. $70,000 Property Management Department Personnel for 2FT, for two full-time employees for graffiti removal. $500,000 to Office of Women's Advancement Contractual to Fund Vouchers for Low-Income Families. $150,000 Office of Women's Advancement Equipment and Maternal Medical Devices. $300,000 Fair Housing and Equity Personnel and Fair Housing Testers. $125,000 Office of Immigrant Advancement Personnel for Director of Lantix and Caribbean Programming and Policy. $90,000 Office of Food Justice Personnel for an Additional Project Manager to Increase Capacity. $400,000 for Office of Police Accountability and Transparency Contractual for Mentorship Program between youth and police officers. And to make the mediator position a paid position. $150,000 Office of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion Contractual for Investigating and Tracking BRJP Requirements for Implementing Metrics. $500,000 Office of Male, Black Male Advancement Contractual for Black Male Entrepreneurship Grant. $500,000 for Office of Black Male Advancement Contractual for, sorry, that's a repeat. $1.5 million for Boston Fire Department Personnel for CAR5. $50,000 Age-Strong Commission Contractual for Senior Programming at Veronica Smith Senior Center. $200,000 Boston Public Health Commission for Men's Mental Health Initiative. $1 million Office of Women Advancement Contractual for BIPOC Women's Entrepreneurship Grant. $38,000 Boston City Council Personnel for City Council Central Staff Salary Increase, direct, sorry, Staff Directors Salary Increase. $250,000 Youth Employment and Opportunity Personnel, $250,000 specifically, sorry, Increase YEO Personnel Services for Outreach Staff to Recruit Organizations and Recruit Young People and Assist Them with Applications and Onboarding. $2 million Office of Mayor's Office of Housing for New Arrivals Emergency Shelter. $300,000 Public Works Department Personnel for Staffing for Street Work, Street Repair and Sidewalk Repair. $250,000 Mayor's Office of Immigrant Advancement Contractual for ESL Adult Classes for BPS Parents. $36,000 Office of Women Advancement Supplies and Materials for Four More Vending Machines for the Menstrual Products Pilot. $300,000 Youth Employment Opportunity Personnel for Workforce Development for Recent Arrivals. $200,000 Age-Strong Commission Contractual for LGBTQ+ Virtual Senior Center. $300,000 Office of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion for Small Business Commercial Rental Assistance Program. $200,000 to Increase Office of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion for Small Business Commercial Rental and Grants. $1 million Office of LGBTQ Advancement Contractual for Opportunity Meaning Grants. $1 million for Mayor's Office of Housing Special Appropriations for Support Public Health and Improve Health Disparities for Residents Dwelling in Neighborhoods Within Environment Justice Communities. $117,500 for Office Neighborhood Services Supplies and Materials for Food Costs for Pole Workers. $150,000 for Office of Women's Advancement Contractual for Maternal Health Grants. $150,000 Office of Food Justice Personnel, this is specifically to increase two staff assistants roles to increase capacity. $200,000 Office of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion Contractual for Study to Assess How to Open Non-Brick-and-Mortar Cannabis Businesses. $500,000 Office of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion Contractual for Community College Infrastructure Support. $500,000 Office of Police Accountability and Transparency Contract for Grants to Organizations Providing Alternatives to Public Safety Criminal Justice Reform. $500,000 Office of Equity Contractual for Reparations Task Force. $70,000 Public Works Department Personnel to Increase Two FTE Hokeys. $100,000 to Boston Transportation Department Personnel for Two FTE Park Enforcement Personnel. $10,000 for the Office of Persittory Budgeting Special Appropriation. Mr. President, I am asking that docket 0760 ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Tanya Fernandez Anderson. Before we continue, there is a discrepancy in one of the documents, so at this time I'm going to take a quick, a quick break, a quick recess.
We're back in session. Let me go back to Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think that if we have a quorum, if we buzz everyone and get everyone's attention and get back and...
We have a quorum.
All right. Well, then, in that case, I guess I leave it to your discretion to start allowing people to speak on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. At this time, I'm going to open it up to my colleagues to speak. I do want everyone to have the opportunity to speak if they would like to speak. I don't think it's necessary to speak twice, other than the chair can have the final say. So I do want to open it up now to all of my colleagues on this issue, on this budget issue. The chair recognizes Counselora Lara. Counselora, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I know that folks are eager to get to voting, as I can tell by nobody's light being on, but I just wanted to make very quick comments just about my amendments and my hopes for this budget and my constituents. I am a district counselor, and so my amendments are reflective of not only the work that I've been doing in my committees, the Housing Committee and the Environmental Justice Resiliency and Parks Committee, but also the work that I've been doing with my constituents, particularly about protecting our most vulnerable communities, folks who are houseless and the members of the LGBTQ community. My biggest amendment is for the Mayor's Office of Housing. We have been doing a lot of work about changing the inclusionary development policy in the city, and the mayor has been very responsive to that, and we have a plan that I think is going to have a massive impact on the access to affordable housing in the city of Boston. And until that plan is implemented, I want to make sure that we're increasing not only how much affordable housing we have access to, but the amount of vouchers that are available to developers to bring down the 80% AMI to a 60% AMI that is affordable to our constituents. I have $2.5 million for participatory budgeting, investing in implementation for the Franklin Park Action Plan. The Franklin Park borders three neighborhoods, and so all of our at-large counselors here and the district counselors from those three neighborhoods see Franklin Park as the resource that it is. And we released a 450-page action plan for how we're going to make Franklin Park work for everyone, and I want to make sure that there are investments in the budget that reflect us implementing that plan in the future. I want to say thank you to the chair and my colleagues, but I wanted to take a moment to just speak on my amendments because I think that they're a reflection of all of the hard work that our office has been doing this last year. Thank you, President Flynn.
Thank you, Counselora Lara. Is anyone else looking to speak? Again, want to give everyone the opportunity to speak, and then it will be Counselor Fernandez-Anderson could respond at the very end, but this is the time for my colleagues. I'll speak at the very end, right before Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. But if no one has anything that they want to speak about, the chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to rise and be recorded as a no for the budget. As the Chair of Public Safety, as I would expect chairs of other jurisdictions and departments here in the city, the cuts of $30 million to the Boston Police Department are just too excessive totaling, I want to say about 58% of the council's total amendments. So I know that folks went to bat to try to reduce those cuts, but you think about our city and you think about just 2021, there was 733, 885, 911 calls in Boston, and 623,000 of them went to the Boston Police Department. The rest went to fire and EMS. And then last year, the 911 calls actually went up because our city's growing. 766,411 calls to 911, 634,132 to BTD for assistance, all hours of the day, any day of the week, any week of the month, any month of the year. They're going 24/7. And so as our city grows and the demands, obviously, on the department have grown too, the inability to keep up with attrition, with retirements, and then, of course, officers being ordered in pretty regularly, B-2, B-3, C-11, at times E-13, and other jurisdictions and other districts as well. So I know my district colleagues know their districts and their police areas and their captains well. Our community service offices, meetings I go to across the city, people want to see more police. They want to see more foot patrols. They want to see more bicycles. They want to have their community service office expanded. They want senior offices. So that seems to be working. Our city, unlike cities our size or bigger, is in tremendous shape. We boast of having the best colleges and universities in the world, the best hospitals and network of community health centers, financial services, life sciences, technology, CEOs moving their companies here because we're a safe city. People send their children here to get a higher education because we're a safe city. Tourists come to Boston, spend their hard-earned dollars in our restaurants and shops because we're a safe city. And that investment allows us to pay for all the other things, including the $52 million that this body is looking to add to this budget. So on behalf of public safety and the need to have a safe city, the cuts to BPTA, and again, in the interest of not being, not sounding like a broken record, but I'm going to sound like a broken record and completely unacceptable that almost 58% of the amendments are coming from the Boston Police Department. Yet, we have a school department, specifically school transportation costs, that are continuing to balloon out of control, a complete runaway train. Kids are not getting to school on time. Kids are being stranded on street corners. And when they're not getting to school on time, indoor getting bullied and beat up on the way to school or on the way home to school. So we've got a school transportation problem and we got a school safety problem. But nothing to see here, folks. We're going to turn around and we're going to go at the Boston Police Department budget to the tune of $30 million. It doesn't square up with me. I'm urging my colleagues to vote no. Continue to work together. Is the Boston Police Department perfect? Nope. Neither is this council. No one's perfect. Can we always do better? Absolutely. But we've got the best police department in the country, and we've got the best community policing model in the country. We are the envy of cities our size and vigor across this country, and we're all seeing it daily as to what's happening in cities that have defunded their police. This cut, $30 million, would be decimating to our Boston Police Department. There are partners, there are friends, there are neighbors, there are coaches, there are mentors. They're doing great work across our city on a daily basis, and the disrespect that they're getting in this budget has me voting loudly and clearly no. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. I'm going to go to Counsel Murphy and then Counselor Coletta. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Chair, for getting us here. I appreciate that. I just want to go on record to state that in this new power we have, that when we want to make an amendment, just to be clear, everyone knows we do have to say where we want to take the money from. And I do know that most, if not all, of my colleagues were very intentional on where they wanted their department pools to come from, and I appreciated hearing that in the amendment meetings and in the budget hearings. But I also just want to stand to say, we have 90 departments in our city, and in this amendment process, we are pulling from 35 of a possible 90 departments we could. And of the 35 departments we're pulling from, 60% is coming out of our first responders, if we include the $1.5 million from the fire department. So I also feel that why is one department taking such a hit when I don't feel comfortable voting that 60% of the amendments we're asking? We did work from last week to now. We did whittle down our total amendments to $52,904,000. And I appreciate that people did think about how to make that a smaller ask, but I just want to stand. And also, $900,000 is coming from our Veterans Department, and I cannot vote on any budget that's cutting any money, $1, from our veterans. So I just wanted to stand to say that. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. The chair recognizes Counselor Coletta. Counselor Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I want to thank the chair for her leadership. She shepherded us through this process, and I know that it has not been easy. It really hasn't been easy for all of us, let's be real here. I'm going to be voting no on the entirety of this omnibus package, and the reason, I'll get to in just a little bit, but it does come with a heavy heart, knowing that my amendments are part of this package, and I do support a good number of my colleagues' ideas and initiatives. My vote is not against the contents of their proposals. This process was not perfect. We are in its infancy, and we know that nothing in life will ever be perfect. But I want to use the opportunity to be honest here, and Counselor Murphy just alluded to it a little bit, but the old system gave counselors a perfunctory vote that was largely performative. It was yes or no, sent to the mayor. She sent it back with her edits. We could override, and sometimes we couldn't. The new system we are in puts the council at a disadvantage from the very beginning, even with the changes to the charter. We're pulling from various departments, which in turn impacts their mission and their ability to carry out essential functions and services. The intent of the charter amendment was to take private conversations happening behind closed doors, bring them out into the council so that everybody could see exactly who was fighting for what. We were supposed to go line by line, advocate, and we did. We did a large part of the last week, advocate for what we wanted to invest in, justify the decreases, and reach consensus with all of our colleagues. So by the time we got here, we would all feel comfortable with what we're voting on and sending back to the mayor. We would be united as a body and stand firm when the mayor will send something back to us and stand firm when it doesn't meet our collective demands. So I now find myself still unclear, and I have been working with the chair. We had a conversation earlier this morning, but I still, you know, I'm looking at the decreases, and I still don't have firm numbers on personnel to city departments, ISD, Public Works, BTD, Office of Equity, Parking Clerk, even assessing. Like, these are all essential city services that take place here in the city of Boston. And so because I have conflicting opinions from different city officials, and I'm sad that we're here, right, this should have been a conversation that we were having over and over and over again. My understanding is that the chair did try to get Office of Budget Management to these conversations, to walk through the impacts, the human impacts to these departments. But it's just a byproduct, again, of the system that we're in. This is tough, and I do echo the chair that I wish there was more participation from my colleagues. I tried my best to show up and be involved in these conversations and work through everything, and she has made herself as available as possible, and that is not a reflection of her efforts. Moving forward, I do think that counselors should be given limits on what they could allocate so that, from the start, it's an even playing field, and then we sprint with negotiations here on the council. Compromise was made, but there were so many proposals that were so large that when compromise was made, you know, it still felt like the whole apple orchard was being taken by a couple counselors, and we were still left with modest proposals. And that's why I think, moving forward, we could consider having a ceiling of how much we are allowed to allocate. I also believe that we should have informal votes to each amendment, just to understand if the majority of colleagues support certain items and where they're coming from. Again, I say this with full understanding that we're in the infancy of developing a system that works for this institution. And so I'm here now, trying to figure out if still, if my proposals, trying to get more hokeys, more parking enforcement officers, are actually going to be a part of a package that the mayor will then consider and be able to bring back to this floor. And I have held seven budget town hall working sessions, and I have heard from my constituents over the last couple of years and months going through that process, and it is my duty to advocate for them. I will continue to do that. I know that there will be more conversations. But overall, I do find the potential impacts to them, and I have thousands of city workers in my district that have been calling me and asking me why I would ever sign my name onto something like this. And I have to look to them and at least give them something or some sort of reassurance. And in this moment in time before this vote, I don't feel like I'm there yet, so that is the reason why I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Coletta. The chair recognizes Counsel Worrell, and then after Counsel Worrell, I'll recognize Counsel Mejia. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn, and thank you to Chair Anderson for stewing this complex, tense process with respect, consistency, and always an eyes towards equity and also as transparency, as well as my city council colleagues for working towards adjusting some of our amendments and finding common ground and compromise. I believe that some cuts that remain in this draft could have unintended negative impacts. The cuts to city departments, while scaled back, will still impact the ability to provide, you know, speaking to some chiefs, possibly some city services, you know, whether it's to deploy more walking beats, provide safety at our community pools, or to provide pedestrian safety, just to name a few. I also want to say thank you to all the residents that have fought in our district for services and programs and that are here today and rely on some of the funding that won't be funded if we don't pass this budget. The initiatives and programs my council colleagues are supporting are valuable. They include new solutions to old problems, responding to emerging issues, and requests to rectify oversights. Each one individually is worthy of debate, discussion, and consideration. I view this budget process as one of many steps and give and take, and also hearing from those we serve and working with our colleagues amendments to build initiatives that communities need and advocating to the mayor to get to the best budget possible for the city, one that balances the need to invest in progress while delivering basic city services every day. I encourage my council colleagues to consider the proposed budget by the chair in its entirety. While many of us may have reservations about individual aspects, I believe now is the time to ask ourselves if this proposal on the whole moves us towards a more equitable and responsive city, and I believe that we are in the middle of a process to do so, and I plan to vote yes to move us forward in that progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Worrell. The chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was debating whether or not I was even going to get to speak because I think that sometimes, sometimes not saying anything says it all. But I can't be that chick. This is, for me, a process that I take with a lot of responsibility because I know that community has asked us to show up for them and to fight for the things that we have been fighting for, for decades here in the city of Boston. I grew up here, and people know that. We keep asking for things, expecting different results, but never having the right tools and resources to be able to execute against them. And so in 2020, and people know, at the height of my first term in office, I really thought that I had a purpose here, that my voice did matter, that I was going to be able to deliver for the people who put me in office. And I quickly realized that the whole process is just a series of negotiations, and sometimes it's all about who you are a favorite of, and if you are the loudest mouth, or if you're going to be speaking up, or any challenges that you're always going to get shut down, or your services are not going to be rendered. Because when you take a stand and you speak truth to power, power has a way of trying to shut you down. But despite that, I still keep showing up, and I keep still fighting for the people who put me in office. Year after year, budget after budget, request after request, here we are, yet again, making decisions that the people who have elected us to make, then always coming back to, it's too much, it's too bold, it's too soon. But we don't have time. As Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley says, change can't wait. But here you are, us waiting yet again. And then all of these tactics, when we pick people against each other and departments against each other, and forcing people to show their hand to make it seem like you're not with one department because you're trying to fight for something else. That's not a good look. Right? Because now what it's going to appear is that we are dysfunctional, that we're unable to work together, but collectively, we sat in this chamber trying to... to work together, but collectively, we sat in this chamber trying to deliver 10 million to participatory budget. We got word that the mayor is not trying to have that. Right? Let's be honest about what does that play? I'm not here for that. I'm here to be honest. And I don't care how uncomfortable people get when I'm in this chamber, but I'm here until y'all take me out. Yes, yes.
I'm going to ask--
I'm not done yet, I'm not done yet.
No, I understand, Counsel Mejia, I'm going to ask people in the audience if you could please not clap or make announcements. Thank you.
Oh, I thought you were going to try to shut me down, Mr. President.
No, no, Counsel Mejia, I'm not trying to shut you down.
Yes, because you know what? I know, I'm teasing you.
I just wanted to make sure that people in the audience understand the rules, that you can't participate during the Wednesday meeting.
I know, I'm just teasing you. And sometimes I get in trouble, because I do come across as very playful, and people don't know how to embrace all of this. But that's okay, y'all will learn. I still got eight more months left up in here. So, at the end of the day, right, for me, it's really about, regardless of where we end up, I'm more concerned about the process, not just the outcome. Because how we get there is just as equally as important as getting there. And so if we're going to be fair, if we have a bold mayor who's ready to meet this moment, who sat in this chamber in 2020 and shot down Marty's budget, and sat in this chamber and shot down Kim Janey's budget, now, when we have a moment to rise, she's going to shut down the people's budget too? Oh, no. I am going to vote in favor of this, and I'm going to vote for the things that the people have asked us to vote for, and then let her veto it, and let her absorb the responsibility of that. But I've done my job, and have gotten to this far, and I'm here for it. And I just want to thank Counsel Anderson, because it's not easy to be a black woman today, let alone be one, and trying to do the right thing for the people. So thank you for your leadership and your courage.
Thank you, Counsel Mejia. The chair recognizes Counsel Louie Jean. Counsel Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start off by thanking Counsel Fernandez-Anderson for shepherding us through this process. I think it's difficult to make every hearing, but I think I attended a lot of them, and the working sessions. And I think it's, you know, I think about process, and it's just, it's hard. It's hard. We've been doing a lot in the last two months, so it's probably hard to get folks' attention, but I just, I'm thinking out loud about process changes in the future, because some of these line item changes that I think some of my council colleagues have mentioned are really sensitive, and we don't have that opportunity. I've talked to chiefs in the past few days, I've talked to a number of workers who've talked to me about the budget and the vote, that if there's a way to integrate sort of this amendment process more into the actual hearings, like, looking at the numbers and the line items with the chiefs, because I've heard from chiefs and directors about, yes, we could absorb this money, but it's really hard, and maybe it wouldn't happen, but talking to them about where could we decrease? If we were, if we had to, where could you take a hit? It is one of the reasons why I was particularly sensitive about, from any department, about us pulling from personnel, because we know that we are in a city that is trying to grow and trying to build. But I also know that a lot of the amendments, including my amendments, are about how do we prevent harm from happening in the first place? Prevent harm that would result if people don't have access to things like homes, access to things like basic needs. I look at our folks who are returning home from incarceration, we have the pilot waiver program to help folks who are coming in. Myself, just going downstairs, going on my way to lunch, have helped two folks returning home get access to basic documents, right? We're talking about a $20,000 pilot program that is a direct result of hearings that we've had here on the Civil Rights Committee. So a lot of these are noble about preventing harm, and I want to support them, and I want to make sure that we're providing stability to our families, to our BPS students who are experiencing homelessness. And there are some changes and some cuts that I'm uneasy about, and that other colleagues have mentioned that they're uneasy about, because we haven't had, like, that you are uneasy about, because we haven't had that opportunity, really, to have those candid conversations. But we also all know that this isn't final, as it was last year. This is going to go to the mayor, and then it will come back to us, and we will discuss and decide as a body what we can move forward on and what we can move forward. Again, this is not perfect. I don't think last week, I don't think there was a 1.5 million decrease to BFD that I think that I just heard about is in this packet, which makes me uncomfortable, because I was very present at that hearing where they were talking about, we need to be able to hire our own people in-house, because that actually reduces the cost to us as a city, when we have plumbers and electricians and people in our staff and not contracting out all the time. So we do have to think about how we are building more personnel in the city of Boston, in all of our departments. And so I'm not, there are things that I disagree with here, I think that, you know, it's not a perfect solution, but I also know it's not the end. And I want to respect the incredible advocacy that's being done around community land trusts to make sure that we are preventing displacement, because we know the harm that results when families and when individuals are experiencing displacement, the pain that our children and BPS experience when they don't have a place to call home, the pain that our new arrivals experience when they don't have access to basic resources, and the trauma that they've been experiencing. And so I know that I stand behind a lot of the amendments that I put forward, that I compromised and pulled some back, and I know that others did as well. I know that we will have more work to do, and I think my colleagues for the work that they've done so far. Obviously, we come to this body with a bunch of different political perspectives, and how best to do the work of preventing harm, of how best to build a more just and more equitable city. But I think, as Counsel Worrell said, I do believe that the work that we're doing here, that we started to do here with the amendments, do get us to a place of, are we inching more towards equity with these amendments? And I believe we are, and I also know that this isn't final, and that we have more work to do, once we get it back from the mayor, who gave us a good budget to work with, that is about supporting the generations of families that live here. We're talking about the littlest ones, investments in universal pre-K, or how do we ensure that our seniors can age with dignity? So I think we have a good blueprint that we are attempting to make better, in the way that we know, as at-large, and District City Council is very close to the people, and I think that work is going to continue. So I don't take this as final. I'll be voting yes, excited about what I put forward, what others have put forward, and the work is going to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Louie Jean. Is anyone else looking to speak? I know Counsel Fernandez-Anderson will speak at the very end. Let me recognize Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Counsel Tananya Fernandez-Anderson, Madam Chair, for all your hard work and the team, everyone who's involved. This is an incredible amount of work. I also want to recognize my colleagues for turning up and offering amendments, a huge range of amendments that are thoughtful and designed to try and improve the quality of life and the dignity of so many of our residents who very often get left behind, our seniors, returning citizens, or folks who are unhoused across the city. I think as we go through this process, it's massive, with those three big books, all the line items, it is a huge task to try and get into the nitty-gritty and understand the implications of moving money from, amending the budget, and moving money from one department to another, et cetera. I don't think we ever really get a full grasp of what that entails and the impacts of what we're to say, what we're offering. One suggestion, we brought this up, I've mentioned it before, in the past, departments offered an annual report, so that when, at the beginning of the year, before we start our budget deliberations, departments offer an annual report about their expenditure, what they spent the money on, what their future vision is, what they want to expend new monies on, and we get a better handle of what it is that each department is doing, what they have done, and where they want to go. So I'm, once again, making a pitch that we would love to see departmental annual reports, so we get a better handle on how money's been spent. It's very, very difficult in the context of budget hearings, where you've got a few hours to sit down with heads of department, sometimes from multiple departments all at once, to get an understanding of what exactly is going on, and how the people's money's been spent in the city of Boston. That said, I will be voting in support of this budget right now. It will go to the mayor, these are this group of amendments, and I look forward to continuing the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. Anyone else looking to speak? I'm going to give Counsel Fernandez-Anderson an opportunity to speak. I'm going to speak next. If no one is going to speak, then I'll go directly to Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, and then we'll take a vote. Thank you, Counsel Braden. I first want to say thank you to Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, the ways I mean to chair, for the important work you did, but also the respect that you gave your colleagues, and listened to your colleagues, and made sure that everybody's voice and input was heard, even if it was in opposition of what were your thoughts, where I think you gave everybody a fair opportunity to be heard, and just want to acknowledge that, knowledge of professionalism. I'm voting no on this, because it has a huge, significant cut in public safety departments. During this time, we need to be fiscally responsible during these challenging times in our city. Our public safety departments, those first responders, they play a critical role in our neighborhoods. As Counsel Flaherty mentioned, they are our neighbors, family members, community leaders, youth sports coaches, they are partners, and they're part of the solution. Now is not the time to cut this budget that our residents rely on for critical city resources, neighborhood services. In my final point, I didn't have notes on this final point, but cutting $900,000, colleagues, from the Veterans Department is unconscionable. We went to, we go to veterans events every November, we go to Memorial Day events in We thank these veterans, we thank these Gold Star families, mothers, spouses, kids that don't have a parent. We go there, what do we usually say on Veterans Day? "Thank you, thank you for your service." But now we'll go to these Veterans Day events in November, and you know what we're going to say to them? "Thank you for your service, but by the way, we cut your budget." I know that's a little harsh to say that. I know I'm putting my colleagues on the spot, but that's exactly how I feel. This great progressive city, what we think is best is cutting $900,000 from the Veterans Department. We call ourselves the most liberal city, and we think that's a good idea, cutting a million dollars from the Veterans Department. I'm voting no for many reasons, but that one, the cuts to the police department will hurt the residents and hurt city services' quality of life. But the cuts to Veterans Department will hurt veterans' families at a time when we say, "Welcome home, but by the way, we're not supporting you, because we don't really have the resources for you, but welcome home anyway. Give them a nice handshake, and send them on their way. But don't give them services, don't give them programs, and we're not giving them services, they've earned them." That's an oath, that's a commitment this city has made, this state has made, this country has made, that when you send a veteran in harm's way, that you respect that service of that family, and you support them, that you don't cut these services. Counsel Flaherty mentioned the other day that, you know, the front page of a newspaper, after we cut, what, $40 million, would be, you know, major cuts to the Boston Police Department, which is accurate. But also tomorrow is, the headline potentially could be, "This body has turned our backs on veterans and their families." Thank you, Counsel Braden.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn.
Mr. Clerk, we're going to do a roll call vote? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I apologize, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. The chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. No need for apologies, I understand, we're trying to get to business. Thank you for the courtesy to allow me to wrap this up. So I think some of my colleagues already explained this in terms of the process, and I do see it as a collaboration between the council and the mayor. The charter amendment literally states that the council and the mayor shall hold equal power, so together, 50/50, that we should have, hold budget powers. And so this process that seems, today, some people have called it, I guess, borderline pretentious, that, or that the votes are not real, but it's not necessarily like that. I think Counsel Louie Jean said it best when she described it as a collaboration and a first step of the process. And so we vote today, and for those at home, because I've invested so much in doing workshops and forums and community, different, speaking at community events, to break down the budget and how it works, in order to empower my constituents with the information of learning how to navigate the budget, so that they can advocate for their needs. But today, when you see this collaboration, it doesn't feel like it's a collaboration, because people will speak on their positions, rightfully so, they have a reason to. And there's a saying in Islam that karidis is a disease, it's not by choice. So, and I think karidis comes from despair, from desperation, and I've said it here before, desperation deserves mercy. So I don't judge anyone if they're being less than bold about progressive positions here. I don't judge anyone if they don't see what we see, I just feel they can't help themselves. And so we forgive you. But moving forward, hopefully, eventually, they'll see the light. But I wanted to be very clear on specifications as to what's happening here. The capital budget, although feels like it's removed, it has everything to do with how people conduct themselves in the operating budget. And so when you look at a capital budget, $4 billion, 4.1, or almost 4.2 billion dollars, and you go to the neighborhoods, and then you look at how neighborhoods are prioritized, whether it's liquid assets, basically, whether it's taxpayers' dollars paying it directly, or whether it's bonds and grants, then you realize that historically, who's been prioritized and who hasn't. And so we understand that infrastructure and capital investments support social determinants of health, that social determinants of health, or healthy social determinants of health, helps to fight systemic oppression and racism, and so we fight in capital as well. But then, historically, when you look at it, last year I came and I was telling you in comparison, Rock, I mean, Mattapan and Fenway-- in comparison, Rox, I mean, Mattapan and Fenway. And of course, I want that for Fenway. I want Fenway, and I want Charlestown to get a swimming pool. I want everybody to get everything that they need and deserve. But when you look at the comparisons between the investments, then you'll see why folks are advocating in the operating to be able to fight for those, as Council Jen was saying, those preventative measures that are going to help us to survive, to live, to not die. And so 23 years difference between Roxbury and Back Bay is the life expectancy difference. So people in Roxbury died 23 years, according to the Health of the City study, sooner than people in Back Bay. Why is that? Okay, well, let's look at our capital budget, and let's look at who is going to say no today and where they represent. So downtown, downtown is going to get over 200 million. Chinatown is going to get about 400 million. Rosendale is going to get less than 50 million. Harbor Islands, nothing. South End, less than 100. North End, less than 100. Dorchester, oh my God, less than 25. Jamaica Plain, about 25. Dorchester, now think about per capita, and I have that breakdown, but I won't do it here today. JP, again, a black and brown community is going to get about a quarter of 100,000, maybe about 30,000. Mattapan, a little bit over 50,000. Roxbury, about 50,000. Charlestown is going to get about 300 million. South End, South Boston, sorry, is going to get about 60 million. Back Bay, about 50 million in comparison to Dorchester. Oh my God, like, why are we doing that? And so when you look West Roxbury, a tiny portion, but last year they got a whole lot. And so Austin-Brighton, less than 20 million. Beacon Hill, still getting about almost 50 million. Fenway, tiny portion, because you know why? Last year, about $78 million in just Muddy Rivers. They've already spent about 90% of it. You know why? Because it was liquid assets. It was taxpayer dollars that went to it. How we prioritize where our money goes matters. That's why people die 23 years sooner in Roxbury than they do in Back Bay. So when I stand here and I talk about systemic racism and oppression, and I talk about how our communities are not invested, and you want to fill up our communities with more police because that's going to fight crime, well, you made us violent. You created a jungle. You made us into an animal, and we're surviving the very system that this city built, and here we are saying, invest in us so that our social determinants of health are healthy. Dr. Vissola Jakutu has done a full study, and she is extremely competent. She's telling the city, the way to dismantle systemic racism is to invest in our social determinants of health. And then you look at a capital budget that prioritizes white affluent communities, and you still say, oh, why are we, why does the research say that we have to take away money and repurpose the dollars to preventative measures? The research says it, that's not good enough. We die, that's not good enough. We're disinvested in, that's not good enough. We're historically disenfranchised, that's not good enough. We come here, and then you look at a body that the majority of us standing up are people of color, and Braden. And so when you see that and you say, vets got to cut, Mr. President, my son is a U.S. Marine. Right now, he's in a desert training. You know I care about that. I talked to you about this. I don't want vets not to get supports. In fact, we talked about other programs that the state is going to highly invest to reimburse that program. I didn't, I wasn't making a irresponsible move. I looked it up, and I spoke with my colleagues, and I know you disagree because optically it looks crazy. And you're like, wait a minute, we're taking money from vets. Wait, but budget is complex and multifaceted. And so to explain it to the public is not fair to do it all in one meeting and say you're not voting for it because of police cuts or because of vets. So I'm not pleading with you today to vote for the budget. This is our budget. This is not my budget. This is not the mayor's budget. This is the people's money, our collective effort. And so I wanted to just close us out and say, every single one of us is doing what we can. You have to protect what you think is your constituents, even though the research says it, even though we're dying in Roxbury, even though where these disenfranchised communities have lack of services. We did the best that we could, as my colleagues were saying, to create the programs that supplement the harm. How else do we do it? It's an amendment process. This is the first step, and then we move on to the second step with hopefully a collaborative effort. I invited LBM. I invited all the departments. I invited IGR. I invited everyone to work with me. But this five-foot-tall immigrant Muslim black woman from Africa could not get all the departments to show up. It is difficult. People are busy. It's not like they're like, oh, screw her, I'm not going to show up. It's a lot going on in the city. So this process that we all put together, that we all showed up when we could, and that we all are here, let's be kind to ourselves. No one is trying to harm anyone. This is about moving funds around to the best way, as responsible as possible. The second part of the collaboration, the mayor is going to suggest her amendments. She has a responsibility to make suggestions, to take positions, and then we have a responsibility, hopefully, to take this apart and go through that process again and see what can we keep or move forward with, right? Or do away with. So there were some things that I heard, and when I was listening to everybody talk, I was like, I'm going to respond to that. Maybe we get, you know, I remember yesterday, counselor, I was like, oh, we can get impulsive, but let me slow down. So I slowed down myself because I'm like, let me not be reactionary. It's not really about my emotions and how to respond to this person. It's about, again, desperation deserves mercy. So none of it is personal, and you guys can have your positions. And hopefully, one day, we will bring you into the light, and you will understand that there are people suffering and dying, and we need these amendments. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Council Fernandez Anderson. Mr. Clerk, we're going to do a roll call vote on this docket, please.
Roll call vote on docket 0760. Councilor Arroyo.
Yes.
Councilor Arroyo, yes. Council Baker.
No.
Council Baker, no. Councilor Braden.
Yes.
Councilor Braden, yes. Council Coletta.
No.
Council Coletta, no. Council Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Council Fernandez Anderson, yes. Council Flaherty.
No.
Council Flaherty, no. Council Flynn.
No.
Council Flynn, no. Council Lara.
Yes.
Council Lara, yes. Council Louie Jen.
Yes.
Council Louie Jen, yes. Council Mejia.
C.
Councilor Mejia, C. Council Murphy.
No.
Council Murphy, no. And Council Worrell.
Yes.
Council Worrell, yes. Docket number 0760 has received seven votes in the affirmative and five votes in the negative. 0760 has passed in an amended draft.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Clerk, can you, Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0761, please?
Docket number 0761, message in order for annual appropriation for the school department for fiscal year 2024, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 10, 2023.
You guys are going to love this one.
The chair recognizes Council Fernandez Anderson. Council Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Okay, okay, thank you. I was going to go to my office and cry a little, but all right, I'll just take a deep breath, and I'll cry later. So you guys know I'm a baby. My constituents call me a baby. For the next one, Mr. President, the Committee on Ways and Means was referred the following docket for consideration. Docket number 0761, message in order for annual appropriation for the school department for FY 2024. This matter was sponsored by Mayor Michelle Wu and referred to the committee on April 12, 2023. From April to June, the committee held 28 hearings overall on the FY 24 departmental budgets and associated capital projects, as well as seven working sessions. The committee held five hearings overall on FY 24 BPS operating budget, the associated capital projects. The committee received written testimony from the Boston Public Schools, as well as written and oral testimony from the public. I just want to go off script here because we all know what this, what this docket encompasses. So there have been, and I will leave to my colleagues, because I know that they have very strong positions on this, to express themselves, theirselves on what their positions are. But this was a tough one. Overall, the bottom line is that I don't believe that going month by month, for the folks at home watching, a 112 would actually prove more impactful than the current, just, you know, structure or option that we have before us as to pass or not pass. So I think that we're working with the administration, working with the schools, and looking more critically into its programs, understanding, and I think that a lot of people have some sort of, I actually agree with the mayor, let me start with that, that investing in capital infrastructures is what's going to support the overall holistic ecosystem in our schools. You can't, just like the points that I make about housing, in terms of providing different, you know, fluid business corridors, or a nice environment, or an ecosystem that's healthy so that you can thrive in your home environment, the same goes for school. You have to provide great facilities, amazing programs, state-of-the-art, world-class education means that has to be holistic. And so the answer is not in, all in social work, all in service, all in response, and there's a lot to juggle. Anytime you have this magnitude of an institution or department to handle children, children are whole people, and they have whole needs. And so that is a very complex thing to manage. And so I would recommend today that as Chair of Ways and Means, I recommend moving this listed docket from committee in full council for discussion and formal action. And this time, my recommendation is for full council, that will pass, the matter ought to pass. And again, I don't think the other option is the way for us to make true changes. I think that our mayor is working diligently and as fast as possible, maybe I would say too fast sometimes for my district. But in terms of, I would just encourage that the administration, the mayor's office and her team, to work more diligently and improve community process, community engagement, in how changes happen, and particularly, especially with the John D. O'Brien move or any other schools, if you're removing assets from communities of color to white communities, you can understand more affluent communities, you can understand how that can create a lot of contention, but to actually allow for community processes that was going to engage and include community voice means that we are, we're doing it with more, just a little bit more care, a lot more care, so that folks are involved. I would say that. But I do believe that the city and the mayor is doing a really good job in terms of building these facilities. Yes, let's go hardcore. Let's build world-class facilities for our students. That's what, that's my position. It's not my position alone. I know that some of my counselors here agree and some disagree, but again, today, I'm asking the council that this matter ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Fernandez Anderson. Would anyone else like to speak on this? I'm sorry. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Council Lara. Council Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I am planning on voting yes on this budget, but as a BPS parent myself, I would be remiss if I didn't stand up and just share a little bit about what I think the BPS budget is doing really well and some places that I think we could benefit to improve. As a parent of an autistic child who is a first grader and is also just spending his first year in full inclusion, the $9.6 million investment to partner with families in the IEP process is encouraging to me. It's incredibly difficult to be a parent of a special needs student already, and navigating BPS, there's kind of an added, there's an added layer of that. And I think that these resources are going to be well received by our schools and the professionals that support all of our students every day. There, earlier this year, Councilor Arroyo, Councilor Mejia, and myself sponsored a hearing to talk about restorative justice practices in the Boston Public Schools, and there is a $1.2 million for expanding the use and access of restorative justice at BPS. We were very clear that we wanted to see these investments grow in our Boston Public Schools, and this investment here in this budget, to me, is just one of the many examples that I've seen in the last year, that Boston Public Schools is listening to what the council has to say and really implementing what we hear from our constituents and making sure that it's reflected in the budget. I want to say that I don't disagree with Councilor Flaherty about the transportation problem at BPS and how much resources were pouring into it. We had a hearing, Councilor Mejia and I here on the floor as well, to talk specifically about transportation issue, the transportation contract, but I do believe that the plan that was presented to us by BPS is a solid plan that will get us to where we need to go. One of my main concerns with the BPS budget is that I feel like we are growing in investments, but that those investments don't always make it to the schools, and they don't always make it to the classroom, and they don't always make it to the students. And so I'm happy to support this budget. There are a lot of incredible things that this budget is doing, and I also wanted to stand up and just urge the Boston Public Schools to look at where the resources are being sent and ensure that we are not being as top-heavy, but that this increase in resources is being felt by the teachers, the students, and the families in all of our schools. Thank you, President Flynn.
Thank you, Council Lara. The chair recognizes Council Flaherty. Then I'll go to Council Mejia. Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the chair for her work on this, as well as all the hearings that she held. Just want to remind folks, obviously, we had a photo finish. BPS had a photo finish with DESI for a complete district takeover, which I did not, and this body did not support. Chronically underperforming schools, school safety issues, and school transportation issues were really the, kind of the big three that continue to be addressed, or at least called out by DESI. So willing to give our mayor and our new superintendent an opportunity to right the ship. It is a $1.45 billion budget. We're actually educating thousands of less kids today than we did, say, 10 years ago. I think we have the largest per capita spending with a focus on improving the sites and making significant upgrades to schools, obviously, that are very old, integrated in, hadn't seen a capital investment in a long time. So I will say, obviously, that bullying continues to be rampant in our schools. I hear from parents and grandparents across the city. I know that fistfights and brawls have been a regular occurrence at some schools, and they've also found guns, knives, and tasers at school or on school grounds. We have to do a better job assuring our consumers, parents, grandparents, and students that they'll be safe on the way to school, at school, and on the way to home from school. And that's partnering with, obviously, with our school officials, our teachers, and our Boston police. And then lastly, the school transportation piece, I would argue that the Three Stooges could probably do a better job handling this contract. Schoolchildren not getting to school on time, schoolchildren being left at a curb or dropped off at the wrong location, completely unacceptable. If we're not getting kids to school on time, they're not learning and taking full advantage of these educational opportunities. And hopefully, there'll be a premium on literacy. And if a child cannot read at a very young age, we've got to pump the brakes and put in the necessary wraparound services to make sure that that happens. That's the big equalizer, and that's frankly, the school-to-prison pipeline that we talk about all the time on this body, literacy, literacy, literacy. And lastly, having a school district that teaches to Boston's economy, limitless opportunity for children, as we know, as we're seeing companies moving here, particularly in the STEM fields and other fields as well, healthcare is and life science. But in order for that to trickle out into the neighborhoods, we have to prepare that next generation to take advantage of not just the jobs, the careers. So having a curriculum that speaks to and addresses Boston's economy will go a long way in closing all those gaps that we talk about on a regular basis. way in closing all those gaps that we talk about on a regular basis here, and what we're trying to address in this budget. So, I will be supporting this budget, and giving our mayor and our superintendent, this body, and our teachers and our school committee, the ability to right some of these issues that DESI has put under the microscope, in hopes that we can do that before they take any further action. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. I'm going to call on Council Mejia, and then after Council Mejia, we'll go to Council Murphy. Council Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to the Chair for shepherding us through that process. Everybody knows that I am a critical friend to the Boston Public Schools, as a Boston Public School graduate, parent, and agitator. Before I came into this chamber, my life was all about making sure that I held BPS accountable, but not just by yelling at them, by partnering with them, and working alongside with them to develop programs, to help address the social, emotional, and physical well-being of our students, and that included programming around supporting trauma, and really recognizing that a lot of our kids were carrying trauma in their backpacks. So, I'm really happy to see the investments that BPS is making in that place, because I think that oftentimes, we always want to default to all of the negative things that are happening in our schools, without recognizing the geniuses that are inside those school hallways, and I think that this particular budget affirms and sees the possibilities, not just the deficits in our children, which is what we often hear in this space. So, I'm really encouraged by the direction that we are moving in. I also would like to say that, in the case around literacy, you know, I'm really happy and proud that my office established a literacy task force here in the City of Boston. To Council Flaherty's point, a lot of our kids are being pushed from grade to grade, and struggling to read and write, which is why they show up with social and emotional behaviors in the classroom, but what happens, instead of addressing that, they end up getting kicked out of school, and they end up getting into some trouble that they don't need to be in. So, really looking at literacy rates here in the City of Boston, and recognizing that our returning citizens come back, who went through our Boston Public Schools, and have troubles reading and writing, and filling out a job application, that when we think about education, and we think about this budget, we think about the investments that we need to make, to make sure that it's not just K through 12, but looking at the entire impact that our Boston Public Schools are making, an entire generation. So, I'm really encouraged by the direction that we are moving in, and I want to echo Councilor Lada's point in regards to restorative justice. We can't say that that, when we think about violence, that the only way we're going to curb it is by adding more police officers and metal detectors. I think that if we're really serious about meeting this moment, investing in restorative justice practice, and doing so with fidelity, is going to help support some of the work that we've been screaming about. The other piece of it is parents. Parents play a crucial role in making sure that our schools are safe, but yet, we're not, you know, we need to invest more in parent programming, and I think that that's an opportunity and an area for growth for BPS, to see parents as part of the solution, not just the problem, because oftentimes, that's how they are seen. So, I believe that there needs to be deeper investments in family engagement, and while I'm happy to see the investments that have been made, I still believe that they're still making decisions for us without us. And I think that there's an opportunity here for Superintendent Skipper, who has been incredibly gracious with our office, and working in partnership with us, and developing programs, and doing pilots, and figuring things out as we go, and I really do appreciate her ability to be innovative, and to take risks. And that's one thing that I have not yet seen in other superintendents, so I'm really happy to know that Superintendent Skipper is open to seeing the possibilities and piloting things, because I think that when you know better, you do better, and I believe that we're moving in that direction. And while I'm voting yes, I know I got to a place where y'all were trying to figure out where I was going to go with this, but I am voting yes, Neil, just in case you want to take that note. But I do still believe that there's some more work to do in BPS, and as the Chair of Education, the first person in my family to graduate high school, that I was raised by a mom that never made it beyond the third grade, and that has a daughter now, that is in Boston Public Schools, and when there was violence in her school, when there was a little stabbing that occurred at the school that she goes to, what my daughter decided to do, instead of feeding to the frenzy, she organized with her peers in the seventh grade, and created a program to talk about how do we improve the school culture and climate. And so, I believe that young people have the tools and the capacity to be able to handle some of these situations, if we give them the resources to do that. And I don't think that my people are unable to show up in schools and be seen and affirmed, and I am hopeful that as I continue to be in this council, that we start being a little bit more emotionally intelligent about how we see kids, and how we invest in them. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mejia. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor, and then I'll go to Council Louie Jean-Afton.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. I think I've been very vocal since I've gotten here on the council, how I feel. As a former student myself in BPS, a parent of BPS children, and a teacher for over 20 years, I know that we can do better, and we can't just say that, we need to actually do it. It breaks my heart, knowing that we're failing thousands and thousands of children every day, and I am looking forward to the hearing that I filed last week to address the correlation between the spending. We are now, BPS now spends more per student than any large urban school in the country, so it's not a lack of money, and I'm looking forward to working alongside, due to Council Mejia, on this, knowing that the lack of return on investment can't just be talked about, we have to actually hold BPS accountable. And yes, I do know that we can give grace, we can say that they're moving in the right direction, but I do feel that it's our responsibility, because when we have 42% per day chronic absenteeism, that's 20,000 children in Boston don't go to school, like, where are they? It's 20,000, I just, it blows my mind. And when BPS buses say they're at a B now, 85%, and we need to get better, yes, we are getting better, but that's still about 450 kids every single day are stranded at buses. And we know, or I know, that the majority of students who are bused to schools are students on IEPs, and that's just unacceptable, they're missing services, any child not being picked up is unacceptable. And we can talk more when we have this hearing, but I do just want to remind people that as we continue to throw more money, but we're not helping, and the return on investment can be the word we use, but to me, just picturing the faces of children in every neighborhood across the city, who show up to school, or who don't, and where are they, and what are we going to do as a city to go find those 20,000 children? And in the high school level, some advertise 96%, we have some high school programs where 85% are absent every single day, that makes it impossible for children to learn, for teachers to learn, for administrators to make all of this fund and money we give them, make it possible for our children, and they deserve it. So, just thank you, Council President Flynn, for letting me speak on this, so, thank you.
Thank you, Council Murphy. The Chair recognizes Council Louie Jean, Council Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn, I want to just say that I am both encouraged and concerned by BPS, and I think that's what a lot of us share. I think we all know that we can be doing a lot more to make sure that every student, that we're able to meet their potential, and help show what their potential is, and sometimes I think that BPS just has a, we need to just get better at comms, communicating the good things that are happening, because there are really good things that are happening. I also want to state that, when people, like, let's say it's new arrivals, or families that are struggling, they put their children in BPS, they don't think about other choices, they just go and, I need to enroll my child in public schools. And I'm looking at things that I've advocated for, and I know Council Coletta has, because her district has seen a good number of new arrivals, and Council Braden, because a lot of the new arrivals in Austin-Brighton have had to commute to Matapan for first life classrooms, for classrooms with students with limited and interrupted formal education, and due to incredible advocacy, we've gotten more sly classrooms around the district, right? That's going to cost money. We're getting, we're talking about people and students in our BPS system, both new arrivals and students who are part of families that have been here for generations, who experience trauma. Thanks to the good work of former Councilor Anissa Asabi George, we have social workers in our schools, visited a school last week at the Chittick in Hyde Park, where they said, what are the things that we can do for this school system to improve our outcomes for our kids? Like, we need more, more social workers, more guidance councils for that to, so that we have more trusting and loving adults in our school systems for our young people. So, when we're talking about cost increases, it really is directly correlated to the need that we see in our classrooms and in our schools, for our students who are really suffering the most. And so, I am incredibly encouraged that BPS really listened, when a lot of us here were advocating for more sly classrooms, for more support for our young kids, and that we continue to do the work of adding more social workers and guidance councils into our school system. Now, there are obviously, with every department, whether that be Boston Public Schools, or whether that be, whether that be Boston Police Department, there are efficiencies that we can be working towards. And at BPS, we don't have the ability to make amendments ourselves, so I do think that there are probably process improvements. When we talk about looking and really exploring and critiquing the money that BPS has, both through this budget, through ESSER, there's a lot of money, and we need to make sure that it's being used effectively for our young kids, but I do think that we are meeting the needs of, or trying to meet the needs of students who are dealing with so much when they come into the classroom, into our school buildings. I say this repeatedly, I go back to my elementary school, where not only did I go to elementary school there, but I was a classroom assistant there in grad school, and my niece is a student there now, and it's a school that, during the time that I went there, and where my niece is there now, has not seen any structural improvements to the school facility. So, we think about the deep investments that we need to make to the physical structure of our school, so that it reflects the dignity that each one of our students walks into the school setting with, to make sure that each school has a library, has a gym, has access to fresh foods, those are the things that we need to make sure that we're doing, and that this budget is trying to do. Deep investments in universal pre-K and early education, because we can begin to see the educational disparities as young as one-year-old, before we're even getting to pre-K. That's what I think this budget is doing, and that we need to continue to do. I really do believe that our superintendent is working with, has the right mindset to get these improvements. We do have an obligation as a city council to make sure that that money is being used effectively, and there's more work to do, I think, process-wise, regarding what we're actually able to do around the BPS budget. But I say that, despite the concerns, I'll be voting yes on this budget, and I think that we have more work to do as a council through the budget process, to really make sure that we are, you know, peeling back the onion, and making sure that money is being used effectively. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Louie Jean. Anyone else like to speak? I would give the opportunity, the final opportunity to Council Fernando Zanderson, if she would like to speak on it, or we can go right to a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, we're going to go right to a roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote on docket number 0761, Councilor Royo.
Yes.
Councilor Royo, yes. Council Baker.
Yes.
Council Braden.
Yes.
Council Braden, yes.
Yes.
Council Coletta.
Yes.
Council Coletta, yes. Council Fernando Zanderson.
Yes.
Council Fernando Zanderson, yes. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Laura.
Yes.
Council Laura, yes. Council Louie Jean.
Yes.
Council Louie Jean, yes. Council Mejia.
Yes.
Council Mejia, yes. Council Murphy.
No.
Council Murphy, no. Council Worrell.
Yes.
Council Worrell, yes. Docket number 0761 has received 11 votes in the affirmative, one voted in the negative, 0761 has passed.
The docket has passed. We're onto motions, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Clerk, docket 1110 has been withdrawn. I will give the opportunity to Council Braden, if you would like to speak on 1110.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tomorrow, there will be a, the judge is going to a status, is that what you call it? A status update on the legislation, on the litigation tomorrow. We may choose to refile this docket on Friday again, for consideration, for discussion next week in an executive session, so thank you for your forbearance. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braden. Late files, I am informed by the clerk that there are no late file matters. We're onto green sheets. The Chair recognizes Council Fernando Zanderson. Council Fernando Zanderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to pull docket 1012, I think it's on page 15, or page two, or on both, and docket 0627.
All right, we'll do the first one first, first docket, 1012.
One is a veto to the other.
Thank you. Let me give the clerk an opportunity to read it into the record, but also then poll the committee to ensure it's properly before the body.
Thank you.
We don't have to, okay.
From the green sheets, a signed for further action message, disapproving amended docket 0627, ordinance to make Boston City Council's webpage on the Boston City website more resourceful and accessible, passed by the council on May 10, 2023.
Okay, okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk, we're not polling the committee at this time. Let me give Council Fernando Zanderson the opportunity to speak. Council Fernando Zanderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move this docket to pass or to override the mayor's veto, although the mayor, Mayor Wu, had vetoed the order, I do not believe that it has any interference with executive functions of the mayor's office and departments, rather, it codifies that certain information should be included on the council's webpage. Transparency and openness are integral components of thriving democracy government, thus we have the duty, or it's our duty, to bridge communication barriers between our work and the community, to provide them with the highest level of support through our work, ensuring that all constituents have a voice in the city government, and that acknowledge that Mayor Wu is saying that there is another way of doing this, but this comprehensive collection of information would present constituents with convenient means, and also to mandate the councilors, or to codify a way to doing it, is obviously a way of creating accountability, so that we ensure that it is being done. And so, I'm asking today for my councilor colleagues to vote to override the veto, since, again, I'm not requesting that the executive body or branch direct them to do anything, I'm simply codifying a mandate here in, with the council, for us to update the webpages, or the city's council's webpage.
Thank you, Council Fernando Zanderson. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? Council Fernando Zanderson, just a question, a clarification question. Can you give us, maybe I missed a little bit of it, but can you give us a little bit of the overview of, the mayor did not approve this because she was not able to dictate to do it, to add that information into the homepage, is that accurate?
No, the mayor is basically saying that we are telling the executive branch what to do in this order, and that I could do it without codifying it, and so, you know, councilor suggesting that I just do this, that we do this without codifying it. And so, literally, the ordinance does not ask the executive branch to do anything at all, and so, her response was, I'm vetoing this because that we, the council, cannot tell the executive branch, give executive branch directives, orders, so I'm specifically saying that is inaccurate, that was not the point, that was not the intent, and that essentially, that this does not interfere at all with executive functions of the mayor, of the mayor's office and departments. Again, that it codifies that certain information should be included on the council's webpage. So, I think there's been, whether it's a misunderstanding, or however her team responded, it has not, again, she's saying that the body, this council- it has not, again, she's saying that the body, this council cannot tell the executive branch what to do, but that's not what the ordinance states at all. Again, it's codifying it how to put this or update the council's webpage.
Thank you, Council Fernandez Anderson. Before we go to a vote, would anyone like to speak on this matter? Mr. Clerk, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Roll call vote to override docket 0627. Councilor Arroyo.
Yes.
Councilor Arroyo, yes. Council Baker. Council Brayden. Council Colletta. Council Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Council Flaherty.
No.
Council Flaherty, no. Council Flynn.
No.
Council Flynn, no. Council Lara.
Yes.
Council Lara, yes. Council Louie Jean.
Yes.
Council Louie Jean, yes. Council Mejia.
Yes.
Council Mejia, yes. Council Murphy.
No.
Council Murphy, no. And Council Worrell.
Yes.
Council Worrell, yes.
Mr. President?
Hold on, let me have the clerk finish. Continue, Mr. Clerk.
Council Worrell voted yes, so 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. There are six votes in the affirmative and three votes in the negative. An override requires two-thirds vote. Does not pass. This fail, override fails.
The chair recognizes Council Fernandez Anderson.
I think that the timing is off. I did, I wanted to wait for my colleagues to have an opportunity. I think that they would have voted yes. So are we able to take a recess to allow the colleagues to return?
I'm going to, I'm going to go forward, Council Fernandez Anderson. And the reason I want to go forward is, when colleagues come in and out, it's distracting, but they're missing a lot of the dialogue, they're missing the votes, and, you know, it is disappointing when colleagues aren't here, but I'm going to go, I'm going to move Council Worrell? The chair recognizes Council Worrell on docket 0970, is that correct?
Yes.
Go ahead, Council Worrell.
I'd like to poll docket number 0970, from page five, second from the top, from the green sheets.
Thank you, thank you, Council Worrell. Mr. Clerk, can we read that into the record, but also poll the committee members to make sure it's properly before the body?
Docket number 0970, from the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology. Message and note authorizing the city of Boston Department of Innovation and Technology to enter into a contract for payment processing services for a term of up to five years.
Mr. Clerk, will you poll the committee?
Yes. Council Worrell.
Yes.
Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Baker, and Council Fernandez Anderson.
So is that, is that a no?
That's a no. I'll do it next week.
You need a form for the committee.
But do it.
We're on to the next one.
Yeah, it's fine. Do it next week.
The consent agenda.
Two weeks, yeah.
I have been informed by the clerk that there is one addition to the consent agenda. The chair moves the adoption of the consent agenda. Has presented, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Consent agenda has been adopted. We're on to memorials for Councilor Arroyo, Worrell, Louie Jean, Makaya, Baker, Gomez. For Councilor Arroyo, and Council Louie Jean, Judith Lamb-Verness. For Councilor Colletta, Patrick Hurley. For Councilor Louie Jean, Deena Terout. For Councilor Worrell, Roxanne Yancy. For Councilor Baker, Pamela Tian. For the entire council, for the entire council, Colletta, Worrell. A moment of silence, please. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of those individuals mentioned. We are scheduled to meet again in the Iona Chamber on Wednesday, June 28, at 12:00 noon. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
The council is adjourned.